We're going to go ahead and call to order the Capitola City Council meeting for Thursday, April 25th. Do we have any public comment on our closed session items? Seeing none, we'll recess to closed session and return at 6:00 PM. Hi, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started and call to order our Thursday, April 25th meeting of the Capitola City Council. We will start with a roll call pledge.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Thank you. We all join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Staff has no changes to the agenda.
All right. We will move on to presentations, and we will start with presentations of certificates of recognition to Capitola Local Government Academy participants. So I will go ahead and name those who were involved in Local Government Academy this year. You're welcome to come up. Our city clerk has some certificates for you. So I will start with John Mulry. Doesn't look like he's here. We'll go to Matt Arthur. We also have Sue Campbell. Celine Grenier. Did I say it right? All right. And Kevin Keat. All right. Thank you all so much for your participation. For those who are not aware, the Local Government Academy gives citizens an opportunity to learn about how our government works. Over the course of four weeks, participants learn about capitalist history, the city's organizational structure, how external agencies support the city, and they hear from city staff to understand the ins and outs of what each department does. Participants will leave this program prepared to get involved in the city, and that could be through volunteer work, through city advisory bodies, or even elected positions as a city council member. So we again thank and congratulate our participants for completing the 2024 Local Government Academy. Thank you. Do we, do you want to do a picture with council for those who are here? Go to up. Okay. All right. We will move on now to our second presentation, introduction of Finance Department Account Clerk Catherine Haney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Catherine Haney as our new account clerk in the Finance Department. Catherine graduated from CSU Chico in May of 2023 with a bachelor's degree in business admin and specialty in finance. Catherine, who's from Santa Cruz, returned to the area following graduation and worked for the Bank of Montreal as an associate banker in downtown Santa Cruz, not actually Montreal, before coming over to the city. And she came over here March 25th and has fit in seamlessly. And one little side note was she had a pre-arranged trip to go to Texas and see the eclipse firsthand. That was pretty cool, I thought. So please join me in welcoming Catherine. We're excited to have her.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm super grateful for the opportunity. Definitely excited to learn more and to work so closely to the beach, which is definitely a plus. Thank you.
Thank you. We're excited to have you. Welcome. All right, we'll move on to item four, report on closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss items one and two on this evening's closed session agenda. No reportable action was taken, and the city council will reconvene in closed session after open session to discuss item number three. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move on now to any additional materials.
Staff had received two emails related to item 9A. Both were shared with the city council and published online and in our hard copy agenda packet, and all presentations for tonight were also shared prior to tonight's meeting.
Thank you. We'll go to item six, which is oral communications by members of the public. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Any oral communications this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to staff and city council comments, and we'll start with staff. Staff comments this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got some exciting news. Next Tuesday night, on Tuesday, April 30th, we're going to host a second town meeting, town hall meeting, and it's going to be focused on the Wharf. We'll be providing an update to the public on the Wharf. We'll also be providing an update on the survey results. We had over 1,000 participants. And then from there, we'll be taking additional public comment. We'll have a little interactive exercise as well as opening the mic for comments. So we're looking forward to that. It's going to start at 5:30, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout. So thank you.
Thank you. Council comments. Do you have any council comments on this end? Yeah, Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, exciting. I was at Rissman Mansion Park today, and they started. They actually finally started. They said it's going to be at least a year before they get all the paths and everything open, the people out there working, but it's awfully exciting to see them out there actually working on it.
Yes, go ahead. Vice Mayor Brooks.
Thank you. I just wanted to report to staff that I've noticed that there's been not so many people signing up on the Finance Advisory Committee, and it'd be great to see if we can open that up. I think right now it's just primarily for, the spots are open for business, but if we can open that up to the community so we can get more applicants, that would be great. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah, that will require change to the fact bylaws, but we can definitely prioritize that for the coming meeting.
All right. All right, great. We'll move on to item eight, which is our consent items, which will be enacted by one motion in the form listed on the agenda. Any council members have any questions or want to pull an item on consent? All right, hearing none, we will entertain a motion.
I can move the consent.
I can second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item nine, our general government and public hearings, starting with 9A, our City Hall needs assessment.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight we'll be presenting the City Hall Needs Assessment, and on the call, we've got Andrea Kefert of Group Four Architecture, who led the effort with the city. So, next slide, please. First, I'm going to give an update on the project schedule, and then Andrea will take it the next step into the existing conditions analysis and take it from there. So our project schedule, we began this effort towards the beginning of the year, or the end of last year, and the first steps were to do the existing conditions analysis, really look at the existing City Hall site, and our previous building official did a lot of the work on documenting the City Hall site and some of the challenges we face within City Hall. And then Group Four Architecture took over to talk about space needs, looking at projections for the future, and then put together our summary and findings, which you see in the published report, which is draft now. If we get feedback tonight on any edits you'd like in that draft report, we can make those changes. And that, that's the process we went through. Andrea's going to go into much more detail, and Andrea can take it from here. And Andrea's got a cold this evening, so she's not in person. She's planning on being here, but she's doing us all a favor by keeping us healthy. So we hope you feel better.
Thank you. Pleasure to be with you and presenting the project to you, the Mayor and Council. Again, apologies for not being able to be there in person, but tis the season when you have children. So I will kick off with the existing conditions analysis that where we were really supported by city staff. We'll then go into projections and end on next steps. Next slide. So the area that was part of the proposed scope of work for the City Hall space planning included the entire Capitola City Hall site, all seven acres. We predominantly focused our efforts on the built facilities on the western side of the site. So if you, next slide. And those facilities included the police storage, the City Hall, which is a two-story space, the police department, the northern wing, as well as the Capitola Museum. Next slide. Your current City Hall dates back to 1976, so you're just getting ready to celebrate its 50th anniversary here. It's currently roughly around 12,300, and that does include the police storage facility that was newly built to the north of the site. Serves a population of almost 10,000 residents and a house is approximately 52 and a half FTE staff. The first step was to identify some of the current building issues, in addition to a number of the building systems being at the end of their life or having inadequacies with HVAC, roofing. The facility is located within the floodplain, but there are a number of issues within the building that also provide some service issues to staff, which include the public service counter and lobby size just being not adequate in its size or very welcoming for community members. The staff break room is uncomfortable and also small, given the number of occupants it serves. And overall, the space really lacks in square footage as well as some modernization. Next slide. When we think about the police station, again, the facility, given that it's serving, focused on emergency responders, is still located within a floodplain, which is highly unusual with that type of facility. It lacks dedicated meeting rooms that are actually separate from staff workspace, so there's actually no dedicated meeting rooms for the police staff to conduct meetings within. Again, the public service counter is quite small, not welcoming to residents. There is no staff break room for the police station. They share a break room with City Hall staff, and the locker rooms are inadequate and not meeting current requirements. There are a number of areas that could be improved to help staff efficiency. The location of the layouts and staff within the facility could be improved. Right now, the public service counter is on the second floor, shared by multiple staff, and those staff are sometimes not directly adjacent to that. There's a lack of collaboration space and conference space to adequately serve all the departments within City Hall. The police storage is in a separate facility, so that requires some inefficiency in how they work. The public, the police cars are actually located in a public lot, and typically they would be in a more secure lot, separate from public vehicles. And the office for the museum curator is located within City Hall. That's serving the local history museum. We also, thank you, looked at how space was being utilized on City Hall, and so the top bar chart represents the current space utilized within that facility. These bar charts do exclude the community room and council chambers on the first floor, so we're predominantly looking at the City Hall office space. Thirty-five percent of the building is dedicated to your lobby and circulation, 14% for storage and building support, 9% for meeting rooms and amenities, and 42% for office space. The bar chart in the bottom is what a typical City Hall office space utilization would look like. Usually, your lobby or circulation is closer to 20 to 25%, including the lobby space there. Building and storage support should be closer to 10%. Meeting rooms and amenities should be increased to 15%. And generally, the office space takes up about half of the space in a more efficiently designed facility. We also did, conducted a staff survey. We had 40 responses of the 52 staff, which was fantastic. In the slide above, or as shown here, it just indicates some of the responses that we received. The majority of your staff are on video conference calls a couple hours a day. The majority of your staff interact with the public at the service counter, and half of that interaction is on a daily basis, and most of the city staff in, share their workspaces. We also asked staff to describe a number of different areas within City Hall, and this is the ranking of them, that those conditions of these areas that are considered great. So the highest ranking area within City Hall is actually your parking lot at 21%, and then you can see it drops off quickly after that. We just, go to the next slide. We can see some of the conditions of the spaces that were considered good or sufficient. So again, coupled with the great, your parking lot is about 50% of your staff feeling good or sufficient. Technology is really good, and then dropping down to meeting space and adjacencies. And then the last slide lists the conditions of areas that staff felt were insufficient or just okay. And so here you can see the inverse of what we've been seeing. The break room, as we mentioned, highly unacceptable, not really working for staff. The general circulation throughout the space, as we noted, it's highly inefficient, and that circulation isn't really working well. Storage, restrooms, and again, that public service counter, again, one of those areas that staff feel are really inefficient.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. We're having some technical issues on our end, so we've lost the slides. If you could give us just a quick second.
Of course. Can you see me, hear me, or is it anything to do with me?
We can, it's not on your end, it's on our end.
Okay.
We can see you now. Did we talk about tech needs in this assessment? I feel like we should have. If we didn't...
Well, 69% of your staff feel tech, technology is not so great.
Andrea, can you share your slides? Can you share them from your end by any chance?
I can indeed. I do have it up on my screen if you would like me to. I think you would just, yes, stop other people's.
Yeah, I think we need to stop our screen sharing first.
Let me just put it, okay.
Apologies for the technical difficulties. Okay, I think you should be able to share now.
Okay.
The goal, Andrea, is to get full screen. That is much better.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
All right. Go ahead and continue. Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. I was looking at it on my screen in a very large format, so I'm glad everyone else can see it. So again, here we are on the slide about the conditions of areas that were just insufficient or okay. We also asked staff to describe their current workspace. The number one response was that it was outdated. It did have significant maintenance needs, noisy, crowded, unpleasant. So just some of the things that we've, we're trying to capture, just to get a sense of how City Hall was currently working. From there, now that we established sort of the existing conditions, we went on to talk about what the projections of what a new City Hall or a functioning City Hall would look like. The first thing that we did was look at different industry planning standards for office space. As we all know, started, probably started the 20th, 21st century, the amount of space dedicated to staff was higher. It was closer to above 200, all the way up to 300 square foot per person. And that was really relying on a couple of things. One, the demand of kind of physical paper still, and the size of technology. As the demand of paper and digital work environments and more mobile technology and smaller technology has evolved, we've seen a decrease in the square foot per person dedicated to office space, and now the average density is 150 down to 175 square foot per person. And it's predicted that with remote work capability that came out of the pandemic, that will either hold or continue to decrease. What's that to say is, when we're thinking about how much square foot per person a City Hall should look at, we set a standard or set a bar at 150 square foot per staff. When we thought about the police, based on the ability of them working in shifts, the idea that they do share a fair amount of desks, they work in shared shifts, and so they share desks. They also have a high amount of field work, obviously, and very few private offices that they could use a slightly denser square foot per person. And we were targeting 100 square foot per person with those areas. How does that compare to how staff square footage is currently? So currently, City Hall staff are averaging 111 square foot per staff, though a very high density of use. And again, our target was to get something closer to 150. And then when we think about police staff, they're down to 64 square foot per staff. And this is actually probably something you'd probably see in a call center, you know, someone that has very small, tightly-packed desk. And so again, well below that industry average or standard of 100 and square foot per staff. We also tried to look at some best practices that are happening in current workspaces, things like more collaborative workspaces, the ability for departments to work together in spaces for that to happen, providing adequate locker rooms, lobby spaces, and break rooms, those key amenities that really promote a healthy work environment, providing workstations that do have a smaller footprint and accommodate some mobility in the workplace, but also have a fair amount of community space and shared spaces that they can utilize when not at their workspace. Some of the other projections that we looked at, we also looked at historically how staff have evolved. And so you can see on the far left, our benchmark was back at the beginning of the 21st century here, 2000, where staff were at 52.8 FTE. Staff did decrease during the recession and have slowly been climbing back and have actually now, you know, returned back to their pre-recession staffing areas. We also were looking at population. Population has been trending fairly flat over the last couple decades, but there are some significant projections within the population growth, and we looked at four different models or four different ways to think about the population growth in Capitola. Starting at the far left, the Ambag Metro Transportation Report of 2040 indicated potential growth of 11%. The trending growth that your staff does without the mall development, targeting about 16%. If the mall development would happen, that growth would increase to 23%. And then the Ambag Housing Element Report predicts potentially all the way up as much as a 36% growth. So you can see quite a range, but the one indication is that there's all, some potential growth happening in the near future for Capitola. We also were looking at your revenue and general fund, that this has been slowly climbing over the last 10 years. But one thing to note is that it's not quite in line with the adjusted inflation. So while it has been increasing, it's not keeping up with inflation. And so after we've kind of thought about all the different projections, we came up with some draft space needs. The table reads at the top of the first row is showing your existing conditions of square footage, 7,800, 7,800 square feet dedicated for just City Hall, including the community space and council chambers. If, if we were to take that same amount of staff and to dedicate what we call right-size the facility and to provide, as we indicated, that 150 square foot per staff, that would bring your City Hall needs to be about 1,000 square feet more, 8,800 square feet. And as you think about if you're planning for a new facility or renovation, we all obviously should always talk about some growth in there. It would be, you know, not forward-thinking to sort of plan for today's staffing, but to allow a small amount of growth. And we had targeted a 10, 15, or 20% growth, providing a range of square footage needs for City Hall from 9,500 to 10,300. We did the same exercise for your police. Again, your existing staffing, 44,560 dedicated to police. If we were to right-size that facility to the 100 square foot per staff, that would increase to 6,400 square feet. And then planning for some amount of growth, 10, 15, or 20% growth would bring that somewhere between 7,000 and 7,600 square feet. And as a combined facility, that's just totaled up, and again, as we're targeting a growth somewhere between a 16,500 to 17,900 square foot facility. And so the last topic we're going to go through is just kind of some next steps. So as, as we stated, some key points about the building conditions. First and foremost, these facilities are in a floodplain. The images on the right show the potential impacts that that has on this facility, especially as we're thinking of this as a police station and how that can hinder the role that the police, public safety responders within the city. The staff survey results show that there's some serious needs that should be addressed, including the poor building conditions, inadequate space to assist the public with their daily requests. And really, based on that existing conditions report in the age of facility, the building is really nearing its end of life. And so plans should be made for either an extensive full building renovation or new construction. When we think about key points from our space standards, again, providing, we should really feature a modern community space, a city council chambers that really meets the community needs, really want to strive to enhance the customer experience for both the community as they enter City Hall and police, so recommending a proper lobby area that can serve both staff and community needs. We're not currently meeting kind of acceptable industry standards for the amount of square footage we're dedicating to staff, so trying to address those key issues. And again, providing the right balance of meeting rooms and amenities for city and police staff that are currently lacking. And the last is the projection. So again, our FTE has shown that staffing levels have returned to pre-recession levels and currently at capacity. There's projections that population will continue to grow based on the four different development models, and that directly impacts the amount of staff needed to serve the community, and that the best practices would be to plan for some amount of future growth to accommodate either changes in staff, the way that the community delivers services, or the operations within staff can all impact the space needs. And that would result in a combined City Hall place for station that would range between that 16,500 or 17,900 square foot. So next steps, I think, once after the adoption of this report, we really recommend that the city really identify and work with the community to talk about what the goals and the vision would be for a new City Hall and police station, to then sort of create scenarios to not only address the needs, the growth, and the visions and the communities' visions and goals identified through that community engagement. The two different scenarios we're proposing is either renovation with an addition of the existing City Hall and police, or a new City Hall and police station, either on the existing site or another city-owned site. Once those scenarios are identified, a budget could be established for each of those scenarios, and then we could come back and engage the community to gather information on those scenarios, and then identify a preferred scenario and next steps for the proposed City Hall and police station. With that, I want to thank you and are open for any questions that the council might have.
Thank you so much. Council question?
Council questions are at the send. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I was curious about the expected need for increase in square footage compared to the expected increase of population. I'm guessing that is not a linear formula, but I'm just seeing 11 to 36% expected growth of the population in the next 20 years. But wouldn't the, if we built a new building or did a major renovation of this building, wouldn't that be expected to be like more like 40, 60 years lasting? Why are we only looking at the population growth for 20 years?
Andrea, can you hear us?
That's okay. So I, my understanding is that these reports only project out 20 years, so we're limited by the information that is provided in the reports.
So so if we are expecting, like, maybe it doesn't make sense, or maybe it does make sense, but I'm assuming that it would be, you know, some continued growth, maybe that would change a lot, and it's a pretty wide range to begin with. But would the the range that was presented in this slide of between 10 and 20% square footage increase, would that make sense if we're talking about, you know, what we need for the next 60 years? I'm not sure what is the lifespan of a building like this, because this one is 50 years, right? And we're saying it's near the end of life. Is that expected if we rebuild?
Generally, public facilities are built to to last 50 years. So that's a pretty, pretty typical change. There's a lot of factors that you could look into. I'm not sure if population growth is a one-to-one for staff growth. So as percentage of population grows, it's not an exact one-to-one indicator of how to project staff. But we could definitely revisit those projections in a in the future phase if desired.
And I think it's also important to note that in that table where you're seeing 10 and 20% growth, that was 10 and 20, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrea, but 10 and 20% of growth tied to existing conditions of just percentages of the building space for right-sized and then a 10% increase. So it wasn't in alignment with our projections for population growth. It's really about city hall size and there's a correlation of why we're projecting 10 and 20, but not, it's not a direct one-to-one with population growth.
Go ahead.
And then I was going to add one more point is that I've seen jurisdictions deal with this kind of thing with basically sort of building like phase one and having a plan phase two, like, you know, you just design the building in such a way. I see Andrea shaking her head. You may have experienced doing this so that you know that there is a way to easily expand the building down the road should you need to.
Yeah, I guess my main point is I would want to make sure that, you know, if we're building at 15, 20% more square footage than we are, that it's going to be big enough to last expected growth for the next 50 years or the lifespan of the building.
Yes, and in interim, you have the ability to lease that space to another
Right.
office space, so.
That's a good point.
Yes, there's definitely been examples of both of that, either building for enhanced growth, knowing that the city could lease out or use that for other uses, or, as Jamie said, plan for multiple phases of growth and build as need.
And I just had one more kind of question is, and this is for Jamie, do we have any work from home policy currently? Do any staff members work partially or fully? Remote?
So we don't have a formal work from home policy right now. You know, one of the challenges we face, given our scale, is that we don't have a lot of backup for each position, whereas if this, you know, a hundred people in the finance department, you know, you know you have multiple backup for multiple assignments. So we haven't, don't have a formal work from home policy. It is something that we're looking at internally. It may not be able to affect that many employees, but it could make a little bit of a difference.
Yeah. And you know, if like our counterparts across the county or beyond, is that is that common these days? I know it is with much of the workforce, but.
It is relatively common, yes.
So it is something that could potentially, maybe should potentially be taken into account when designing the size of our needs going into the future.
Yeah, I think Andrea can talk a little bit about that, about sort of how they factor work from home in and the overall kind of long-term projections.
Yes, I think as Jamie said, as you saw from the survey, about 80% of your staff are serving the public on a daily basis at the counter. So there's not a lot of staff redundancy, so that's one thing that we would have to consider. The other one is if you do implement a work from home policy, unless you're providing what they call like an AB schedule, so two people are sharing a desk and those two people are obviously not there ever at the same time, that's where you really see a significant amount of square footage being able to kind of get recaptured and reused. If you don't have, and the the backside of that is an obviously collaboration within a very small department decreases significantly when half a department is is always gone or without of the office. If you're only talking about remote workdays, one or two days a week, then there's still the need to provide every staff person their own individual workstation because their schedules could overlap. And so that's that's sort of the balance that we need to take into effect is even in a remote work policy, there may not be the capability of a true sharing of desk.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. In regards to the current amount of staff and the projections for growth, do we have a number of the increased staff we require for that population growth? Because the projections here say that we need X amount of square footage per employee. I'm wondering if that was was talked about.
So we do not have the specific number, but we would do the math backwards so of like what the square footage per staff is. So if we're talking about 1,000 square feet, additional space, I'm trying to find my chart. It's really tied to like for police, we would divide that by 100 and for city hall, divided by 150. So I apologize for not having that exact number, but we would work the math backwards on that.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think I was just making a point. So when we talk about next steps or looking into particular next phases of, with growth comes the requirement for more staff. And so the 10,000 square feet with 20% growth that we might need might even be more than that. Do I remember correctly that we had a preliminary study or plans created that was presented to staff already with city hall renovations? And if that's true, or maybe I jumped it up.
So I've been with the city for 10 years, and the first like town hall meeting I went to was about a possible plan for city hall. So that that did occur 10 years ago, and I think 10 years prior to that, there was another study done. So this has been, we've, this is the third time that we've been through this process. And as you saw in the growth projections, you know, back in 2000, we were at the staffing numbers that we are now. At 2010, when we went through the process of, and a lot of public outreach tied to a possible plan for development at city hall, the staffing numbers were lower. And then, and from that, I'll say, when that study was done, some of the feedback we got is that these initial steps of documenting city hall and what exists and going out to the public and hearing the vision of what they'd like in the future, there needs to be more emphasis on that. So this time, we're really, we're documenting city hall, and then the next step would really be to go out to the public, to our residents, hear what the vision for the police station and city hall is for the future, and then come back with scenarios based on that. So a lot of public input upfront. And then we're here today because we're back at kind of peak staffing and in the same structure, so.
And my last question is, is just to the point that we don't own lots of land anyhow. This is kind of what we have currently. So when we look at next steps, we're, or phase 2.0 or 3.0, whatever this is from 20 years ago, we're actually really talking about the space we have now.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. We're going to take it now to public comment. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this item, now would be the time. Any public comment? All right. Hi, welcome.
Ehrler Gier, vision of the public. Some thoughts on this. I wonder how much it's really necessary. And you are projecting population increase. However, I've been hearing on the news how populations are in decline all over the world. Some of the causal factors I've learned are like men have their cell phones here radiating their gonads, it's affecting the sperm count. And I have an article here also about, this is called, this relates COVID shots for adults and children, what we know now, Western A-Price Foundation. Research found that two doses of Pfizer's COVID shots impaired semen concentration and motile counts in men for at least three months. Pfizer documents released by court order confirm that in women whose pregnancy outcomes were known, 87.5% of pregnancies ended in a miscarriage during clinical trials. A widely circulated, the select point here, a CDC-sponsored study used to claim that the shots are safe during pregnancy, misreported its pregnancy loss data. The actual miscarriage rate was 82%. So I'm questioning the population growth quite seriously. Also, you're talking about vision of the public, and I want to offer some critical and vital alternatives and outlets. What I always look for in decades past, of course, was going to a place where it wasn't, people weren't smoking. Probably in this chamber 40 years ago, people smoked, right? All the time. Now we have microwave radiation from all these wireless microwave emitting sources. And the documentation, it's overwhelming. I'll just read you a little bit. These should be replaced by wired, like Ethernet, technology. And just because, how much time I have, a little bit. This is called public health warning. Wireless devices emit microwave radiation, a known biological hazard. Every time you use a wireless device, you're exposed to microwave radiation. The World Health Organization labels this radiation as a possible carcinogen. So that's my vision, is to see wired technology.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. I have my own clipboard, same color.
It does look like the same one.
Run away.
Sorry. Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to city council for deliberation and discussion. I don't think we have a vote on this this evening. It's just receiving the presentation, correct? Okay. So any further discussion? I'll start at this end this time. Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, great presentation, a lot of good numbers. Give us a good, clear view that we definitely need new city hall and police department. We've been talking about this for two to three decades now. Even before the flood of 2011, I think it's time for the city council to make it a top priority and do have some places where we can build just outside of the flood zone that the city owns, but we really do need to take a good look at this.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan?
Yeah, thanks. I'm definitely in an agreeance that I would like to sort of bring this back as a priority for the city. I realize the budget is an issue, but I want to show our staff members, our police department, that we're in support of them being happy while they're at work and not being ashamed to have somebody from another police department come and see where their workspace is and what that looks like. Also, a huge point that I remember was just the safety aspect of where our police are able to park their vehicles, not only being in a floodplain, but being in a public area. I think we need to really think about that moving forward. I don't know what that looks like space-wise, but I think that is of importance. And I like the idea that we had talked about either maybe utilizing another area and building something new that in turn we could either rent out at some point in when we're in transition or something like that. I want to see what the options are for something like that to sort of, you know, make make this a more robust situation for us. But thank you for the presentation and yeah, I want to see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brooks?
Katie, can you give us, I know that council made this a priority, that's why we have our report today. What what are the next steps? What are we looking at?
So the next steps would be, I'll just take a step back. So back on March 6th, when we went through the budget principles and goals, going to the next steps did not rise under like what would be done in the next fiscal year because of funding and then just department obligations at the time. So definitely happy to bring it back to you. But the next steps would be, so just for clarity, we met our current council goal of completing this project. Or the studies, excuse me.
Phase one.
Okay.
Phase two, the next step is to go out and really look at the goals and vision of the community for the police station and city hall, then coming up with scenarios to look at, both scenarios for doing an addition to city hall or creating a whole new city hall on the property. Next, we would get numbers tied to those different scenarios and then go back out to the public with different scenarios at different costs and get more feedback on which alternative or non-alternative would be chosen, so.
And so phase two, the the budget that's tied to that was not allocated in the goals that we've set already. Do we have a number about what phase two?
The projection for phase two, when we set out on this, was $67,150.
We know we don't have that much money in our budget for this year, based off of what was brought to us, what, last time? Couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, early March.
Yeah. So $67,000 to move into phase two, and if we, so that's, when does that, if we were to make that a next year's priority, when could we see the, would that be next?
Yeah, the next.
April?
Oh, for.
You know what I mean?
Plan out a year, yes. So it'd be next March, making that a priority within the budget goals.
Okay. Is that the question tonight to ask us if we want to do this now or later, based off the budget? And Jamie, looks like you.
We could either do this tonight, if you wanted to give direction, but we would definitely come back to you during the budget session to discuss if guided in that direction. If you did not want us to bring it back during the budget discussions, I think the clear message tonight would be let's hold off on.
Yeah, I mean, I would look at my colleagues just because we know, even if we figured out the $67,000 to go to phase two, we know that we don't have the budget to rebuild. Once we know, we know what we need to do. We just don't have those dollars tied, or we don't have those funds to move forward, which is always so hard to do. I would be looking for feedback whether, I mean, I could go either way. I don't know that it's a priority as as of this moment. It's information that we were gathering, but it's up to all of us to see if we want to do.
A question for Katie.
Yeah.
What could we do without spending the money right now to try to get to the next step, just so we're moving forward?
I believe there's $70,000 in the current budget to do upgrades to the restrooms and the police facilities. So that that is one thing that is happening within the current budget. But other projects, I don't think we have any other projects identified.
I think Councilmember Clark, you were asking about how to advance the ball on the long-term plan? Yeah. I mean, it's a trick. So Director Hurl, he's exactly right that during the goal-setting session, we identified this as an important project, but it sort of fell below the line in terms of resources and stat and funding for this next fiscal year. You know, one of the thoughts I've had is that we can take another look at that. We're going to be producing the budget and talking about those goals coming up here next, in a few weeks, frankly. So you can take a look at the overall priorities for next fiscal year. We can see where this might. We can see where this might slot in. Another option would be to sort of give staff the thumbs up and say, look, when we get some bandwidth and some resources, you guys would be interested in seeing a proposal for us to come back with phase two, but we can't move forward at this point. So those are a couple of different options I've thought of. Short of it, this point, just sort of taking no action tonight is either just say, hey, let's talk about it further in the budget, or say, hey, staff, when there's some bandwidth, maybe some potential funding, let us know and we'll try to move forward then.
Yeah. I'd like to revisit this during our budget discussions and see if we can't find that $67,000 somewhere. But I would be more concerned about staff time than the $67,000 compared to take this next step forward. And I would suggest that we see if we can't find that during the budget, if we can't get that together, and then put it as like a, you know, secondary priority if staff has the time, because staff has a lot on their plate right now. And I don't, you know, we can ask them to do everything, but they'd have a finite amount of time and splitting tasks, they're splitting their time up to a million tasks is probably not very efficient. So yeah, I would think it would be great if we could somehow put together the money to move forward to the second phase and give staff direction to do it as they are able to, if they are able to during this next fiscal year.
I guess I have, can you clarify, like what the, what's encompassed in that $67,000?
So definitely two public outreach meetings, one for the visioning and goal setting. Then it would come, and then we'd create scenarios, so they would actually develop different scenarios. I think in the RFP, we identified a number, I think it's like three or four scenarios for City Hall development. And then that would, you know, and throughout the process, we'd be coming back to City Council. But once those scenarios are developed, going back out to the public to see which one is the best, and then taking it to City Council for a final decision.
So if we've already been told that there's like three or four ideas, do we have that on paper or like in some type of?
So they would develop the scenarios and actually show just like very simple renderings of what could happen on City Hall to like give the, to put a picture to the, to the project, so.
Okay. If I may, I would, so I see Councilmember Peterson's point, I'm thinking about the gray lines in our budget, you know, the light gray in the.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's fair. I'm actually not going to be at that budget meeting. So I'm going to share my thoughts here. I don't, I don't see a point in allocating those dollars, just thinking about the community outreach we're already doing for the Wharf and asking the community for input or this. It's just a lot for also the community to be thinking about, lots of big projects, to your point, lots of staff time. But I don't know that's a decision we need to make tonight, but I just want to share my feelings about allocating any dollars. I think it's fair to make it a priority and maintaining that and definitely getting back to phase two, so we can see those renderings and what we can do. And address your point, Councilmember Morgan, about, oh, what if we have to rent something? Or, you know, getting all that data and information will be helpful and praying that there's not a flood in the meantime. But as of today, I am comfortable with information we received and maintaining it as a gray item, because I think it's actually on the sheet in gray. Yeah. So. So that's just my feedback. Thank you.
All right, I'll just share some quick comments. So I do see the very real need that we have here for an improved facility for our staff and our PD specifically with the amount of square footage that they're at now compared to what they need to be at. It was quite surprising. I agree, though, that we do have other budget priorities at this time. I don't mind it being brought back during the budget discussions for us to hear about it. I am wondering if there has been any discussion of just a ballpark figure of what we anticipate this kind of project would cost.
So I am going to ask Andrea for help. I assume Andrea, you're still on on this one?
Assuming tens of millions.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's a good guess. Andrea, I think will be able to chime in with a little bit more information. I do think that given the disasters we've had and the actual flooding in our police department, that some of the emergency operations could be potentially funded from the outside. But at the core of it, city halls are usually funded by cities internally. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Andrea, for your, your input to that.
Yeah. So as we all know, construction prices have been ever escalating, especially over the past couple of years. The price per square foot for a city hall is roughly $1,000 a square foot would be a good starting budget. Police stations are more, as you know, police stations have to be built to a higher level of standards when it comes to the seismic and building code requirements. So they're built to withstand and be, you know, available during those emergency uses. So they have an even higher cost per square foot upwards to 1,200 square feet, or $1,200 per square foot, I'm so sorry. So those are the types of, you know, quick numbers that you could apply. These, so, you know, I think given the, what, 16,500 to 17,900, you know, you could probably start to think somewhere in the 20 sort of million dollar plus or minus. I think the key is, and that next phase is not only to engage a community, but to come up with scenarios that talk about what the budget and the cost of these would be and identify some potential funding sources and what we as a community can do, whether that's a general obligation bond, some grants. There's a number of different ways that these facilities can be built. And part of that phase two would be to develop a budget for those scenarios and come up with some paths forward for the city to consider ways to sort of fund the project and move that forward.
I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, that's a lot of money. So.
Yes. I hate to scare people, I'm so sorry.
No, no, I appreciate it, because you have identified a very real need that we have. I think, as Vice Mayor Brooks mentioned, it's kind of a grayed out area right now in that we see it as a priority in the future as it was 10 years ago and 10 years before that. But $20 million is a lot of money at a time when we're trying to complete a Wharf and just in the last, what, four or five years, we finished a $12 million library and lots of big projects. And so I do look forward to hearing more about this in the budget discussions, but I personally also think that this is probably a longer term project and we should be prepared to start budgeting for this year. Yeah, go ahead.
You know what might be helpful, though, to, or what I'd like to see, even if it's in a Friday update, is just, I know we're looking at potential ballot measures for November, but just trying to understand what bonds look like for, for the city in the future and really what that means. And if we were to borrow $20 million to complete a project like this, I think those are just like things we can get answered to today to see really how far off we are. And I know with rate or, what are those called, interest rates, and will change in five years or whatever, but maybe that'll just kind of give us some, some ideas about how really far out this is. Thank you. Sorry.
Yes, I'd like to add one more thing. I was working with the Sheriff's Office when they were rebuilding the new Sheriff's Office, and they thought they would never be able to get to their over $100 million point. And there was a lot of planning they went into that. I would like to see us continue the planning and, and then we can work on the funding and maybe we can identify a location. But I would really love to see us keep moving forward on it.
I would second that, because I know, I don't think this is what anybody's saying, but even though it seems like an incredibly daunting task and, you know, an unfathomable number or price tag on this, I think it's still really important to keep moving these steps forward, because, you know, if we don't take any steps forward in the next decade, then where are we going to be, you know, when a disaster strikes? And we're still going to be, you know, that 10 years out, even if it is a very ambitious goal.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Staff, bring us back some more numbers and consideration in our budget, budget discussions?
Sure.
Show us where we can find that 20 million.
$20 million. I guess, I guess what I would share with, with council and the community on this is that, you know, these sorts of things happen in steps and, and it's a big, it's a big number, but as I mentioned before, you know, we have been affected by multiple disasters. Our police station has been underwater. That means we'll have certain partners who are willing to help for certain portions. It doesn't mean that there's not going to be a local contribution, there absolutely would be, and we're absolutely going to have to be creative. But I think that if we can kind of break it into chunks, I think there is the possibility. And it is, I think, all the council members are right. It's like you have to, at some point, you have to take that first step and figuring out strategically when that right time is, is absolutely essential. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item 9B about the Jade Street Park Universally Accessible Playground project. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I realize after this was published that our park has a name, and I should have titled it the name of the park. So this is the Treasure Cove at Jade Street Park, bringing you back, this back to you this evening to request funds to do our final PS and E. So as a reminder, the Treasure Cove at Jade Street Park is a park that was constructed in the late 90s and had some revisions in the early 2000s, but it's to completely replace all the park equipment and replace it with a fully accessible playground. We've partnered with both the Friends of Santa Cruz County Parks for fundraising on this project, and we are under contract with Verdi Design, who is a very well-known parks designer in Northern California. So a quick timeline to jog your memories is that we got that agreement with Verdi to start our community outreach, which we had a survey and several outreach meetings to develop and assign of this park and have an existing MOU now with the Friends of Santa Cruz County Parks to raise a million dollars for the project. Brought a conceptual plan and a final conceptual plan to you all in the summer of 2023 and have not been back since. So we are in April 2024, and if you are on the Friends newsletter, they've achieved 50% of their fundraising goal, which is really exciting. They have a lot of traction, they still have a lot of interest, both on the park in general and then also on sponsoring individual parts of the park. So they are very excited. So with that, we are looking to get started on the final plans, specifications and estimates, so we have a bid ready project between now and construction, which we would hope to start in the spring of next year. We have to complete our plans, but then also identify some additional funding. So next slide. So part of getting the PS and E and the final plans is to have a shovel ready project. And shovel ready projects are ones that you can go out and bid the next day. And that's a lot of times what you need for external funding. So as you know, we have our funding from the CDBG via HUD federal funding for the community center to start later this fall. That was very much a shot in the dark that we achieved, and we're hoping to strike lightning twice in the same spot. There's another round of funding coming up this summer. And then the rumor also is that State Parks is going to have another round of general statewide funding for parks later this year also. So really having final bid ready plans puts us in a really good position to obtain some additional funding. Next slide. So just if you're not aware, what we have now is a conceptual plan. There are very nice pictures and a rough, more than a rough, but very much a cost estimate. And what we're trying to get there is what's on the right, which is very pretty to me, our bid ready plans, engineered specs, that kind of thing. Next slide. Also included in the scope for this Verde update is the path of travel from the playground to the restroom. That was not in their original scope, it is not currently ADA, it's a DG. So it would be getting them to design it to the appropriate grade and then also appropriate materials to get from the park area to the restroom. Also potentially part of some of that grant footing would be to apply to update the restroom, because while it is ADA, it is definitely not in the most ideal configuration for today's standards and expectations. Next slide. So as a reminder, the fiscal impact here, we have with the fundraising goal, when the Friends meet, meet at about $1.3 million, we have a conceptual plan of about 1.7. And then that enhanced design, if we come up with other funds, additional play equipment, upgraded play equipment that we identified to be in the same footprint, so easily implementable and pivotable. We still would have a shortfall of around $3 to $5 million, which hopefully we can alleviate with those grants or additional fundraising. I would hope by the end of this calendar year, we would have some direction on if we got these grants or not and be able to make a more informed decision.
Jessica, I think you said $3 to $5 million, but you meant?
Different project.
Yeah.
$300,000 to $500,000, thank you. Next slide. And so with that, here are some pretty pictures and the recommended action, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions? No questions? Questions? Yes, go ahead.
Just have a question on the path to the bathroom. You said it's decomposed granite right now?
Yes.
And that's not good for wheelchairs, is that?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll bring it out to public comment. If there's any public comment on this item, now would be the time. Welcome back.
Shortfall of $3 to $5 billion, is that what I heard?
No, it was three, three, that was a misspeak, sorry. It was 300,000 to 500,000.
500,000, okay. Lot of money. The elephant in the room. I go to Jade Street Park sometimes, and I used to take classes in the community center years ago. And I was in this very room some years back when Verizon put a cell tower, they got approval initially, and then to put a cell tower on top of near 41st Avenue, New Leaf. And it's like a telecommunications corporation dictatorship. The City Council had an ordinance that said there needed to be a certain distance between cell sites and neighborhoods. And Verizon didn't like that, it was too restrictive. The City Council, with my term meaning, leading the comments, said, "We do not like to be told what to do. We as City Council members feel that we need to make decisions that we feel are in the best interest of those we represent." And the City Council upheld that ordinance to not have that cell site there. What happened was Verizon said, "You have to change your ordinance because you're restricting our industry."
Ms. Garrett, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to remind you, just this comment on the universal playground.
Where there is right now, on top of the community building at Jade Street Park, do you know this? An antenna emitting microwave radiation, which is biologically harmful, especially to children. That should not be there. Children and everyone should have a right to not be microwaved and harmed. So when you're talking about universally acceptable, you're just not talking about this, but it is a key factor. I and many others avoid certain places where we feel terrible from the microwaves, headaches, et cetera. There are a lot of symptoms. And that needs to be made accessible to everyone by removing the microwave radiation harm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Any further public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, and I'll start with comments on this end. Councilmember Peterson, any comments? No? Vice Mayor Brooks? Comments? No? All right, well, then we'll undertake a motion.
One quick comment.
Okay.
I would just like to shout out to our Friends of County Parks, they've been doing a great job on finding our fundraising throughout the county, and so my hat's off to them.
Yeah, I will echo that. Our friends at County Park Friends have been all over the place, along with Dan Hayfley and Mariah and Tricia. Everywhere I go, it seems like there's one of those three are giving a presentation on this park and reminding everyone how important it is and to donate. This Sunday, my mayor's message in the Sentinel, as well as next week in the Capitola Times, will include more information about this project and the community center renovations and upgrades.
and upgrades. This has been a really great opportunity for us to collaborate with County Park Friends. I appreciate the time that staff has put into this, the Verde design, for the wonderful design they've created for us, and Vice Mayor Brooks for really having the vision for this playground. I'm really excited to see this move forward. If there's no further discussion, we can entertain a motion. I think we are looking for authorization for Amendment 1 to a professional services agreement with Verde Design in the amount of $10730 for final plans, specifications, and estimates. I can't make a motion.
I'll move to approve the recommended action.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So I will turn to my city attorney to ensure that I'm doing this correctly, because we are going into closed session, so I can adjourn our open session and reconvene a closed session, assuming we're not going to convene again if we have no reportable action?
Madam Mayor, if we could reconvene, so I can report out on that.
We will have to reconvene. Okay.
Yes.
So for now, we will adjourn our open session meeting and convene our closed session meeting, and we will recess to the closed session and reconvene after the closed session. For those of you who won't be staying for that, have a good night. Please take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Do we need to wait for Julia or Chloe, or we're live? We have to report, but we don't have to zoom it, I don't think legally, do we? I think we're live. It says YouTube right there. It is live, okay. That's okay. I don't think we need her. No offense. I mean, we always need her, but we'll be okay right now. All right, we are going to reconvene from our closed session. Can we get a report out on closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss item number three on this evening's closed session agenda. Direction was given, no final action was taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will adjourn, and everyone, take care of yourselves. Have a good night.